Alderman Catalano.
Here.
Alderman Jacob.
Here.
Alderman Messina.
Here.
Alderman Sorrentino. Alderman Sizbarsky.
Here.
Alderman E. Wesley.
Here.
Alderman R. Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Woods.
Here.
Mayor Police.
I declare a quorum present, please stand and join in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Need a motion to approve city council minutes, September 1st, 2016.
Second.
Any corrections, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do any citizens, I do have one citizen who wants to be here on matters not listed on the agenda, Mr. Dave Hasterock, if you could please go to the podium. And give your name and address, please.
My name is Dave Hasterock, I'm in Ward 4, 330 Maple Avenue, Wooddale. Got a couple of questions, I'd like to ask the council if they know anything about what's going on, because every time I ask somebody, nobody seems to know. First of all, who is responsible with this intersection upgrade here? Who's responsible for changing the traffic patterns when you get a green light, or when you get a green arrow, or when you get this? Who's, is that something that's done by the state? Or is this being done by the contractor, so he doesn't care? Because it seems like every other day, they change traffic patterns, and people don't know where they're going. They're switching lanes on a daily basis? Same thing with Thorndale and Wooddale Road. Who is in charge of regulating the traffic patterns at both of these intersections?
Mr. Murmas.
I know for a fact the Wooddale Irving intersection is IDOT. I'm not sure, I don't know Chief if you know the tollway, I'm not sure, up by Thorndale. But I know that it is IDOT for the intersection.
That's really something, because I think you're gonna have more accidents there unless these things are taken care of. People don't, sometimes don't know where to go. They don't know when they should make a left-hand turn, when they shouldn't make a left-hand turn. You got people going from a left-hand turn lane, driving straight into other traffic? Somebody's gotta regulate this. Next, I have the suburban bank here, that I understand the city now owns. What's going to happen with that?
Go ahead, Mr. Murmas.
That is in the long-term planning for the city. We're in the process of developing, or redeveloping our comprehensive plan. So we would talk about that during that process. So that's a long-term initiative for the city to develop that. There is no item in the near future. It's more of a long-term planning initiative.
What is that gonna be in the long-term?
If I knew that, I'd put some money on the Cubs to win the World Series, maybe, I don't know.
Well, Mr. Police, why don't we get that, turn that into a food store, so we have a food store in this town? And speaking of that, the household bank complex up here across from the junior high school, what is going to happen with that? That place has been empty for years. Couple of people that I knew are in real estate says nobody wants it, because it's a single-level building, it doesn't suit their needs. Why don't we turn that into a shopping mall? That whole big development there with the pond and the grounds and everything. We couldn't get some kind of retail stores to come in there, being that we're gonna have this wonderful 390? Cut off right there, okay? Why don't we put some retail in that, and get something back on that, rather than that just sitting there doing nothing?
Mr. Murmas.
I can assure you, if it were as easy as, you know, me picking up my phone and calling to get some retail, it would've been done long ago. Mr. Cage, our community development director, has some updates on that property. He can probably update you on some of that offline.
Okay, the, I think, oh no, it's not. I thought I was gonna say the last item. Can we install speed bumps on commercial between Route 83, or between the Bensonville Line and Wooddale Road? Like the mayor's got in front of his house?
We do have a street hump policy, or street bump policy, and I would defer to the chief to maybe make you familiar with that, you know, offline. We do have a policy on that, though.
Because I've sat there and I've clocked cars on radar, and a couple of them I've seen coming through there 55 miles an hour in that area, okay? And it's even more prevalent now, with the kids being back at school. And I've talked to two of the bus drivers that drive the route there, and they said on a daily basis, they have cars with the red lights on, passing the buses. This happens all the time. So, I don't know, are they just pulling my leg, or does this really happen? I am going to see if I can get with the Department of Transportation, and see if we can get a grant for District 7, to equip all of our District 7 school buses with cameras. So when they try to pass, they get a $500 ticket for passing a school bus. I think that's only fair. Now, while getting back to the humps on the street over there, which I'd like to have, we need bigger, or some kind, some more signage, especially coming from the Bensonville area, that says that along Commercial, along Elmhurst, along Stone, this is local traffic only. Now, I have witnesses, they're not here tonight, but I have witnesses. Eighteen-wheelers turning off of Irving Park, coming up Maple to Commercial. Then they turn and they route to Wooddale Road. A container truck. Nobody's having a container delivered in their, at their residence. Why is an eighteen-wheel container truck going down Commercial? Now, I understand the police department can't be everywhere at every time. Maybe we should try and get some kind of cameras on Commercial, and stop these drivers, which don't belong there, from coming down and using our... Are you gonna replace that street then, when this is all over? And I might get, am I gonna get a new street on Commercial? Because it's crumbling. And you know why it's crumbling? Because we're getting all this heavy truck traffic. The cement mixers from Prairie, okay? These trucks that are trying to dodge the intersection? The street's not gonna last very long. Well, I've made my voice, I hope some of this would be taken into consideration.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you have, any other citizens wish to address the council on matters not listed on the agenda? I have a few here, on an item that's on the agenda, those will be called up later. Anybody else? I have no written communicate keys. Under Mayor's report, I have nothing this evening. Mr. Murmas, you have anything under your report?
Just, just one item. Just want to remind the residents at home that the long-awaited completion of the Wooddale Road Irving Park Road intersection safety project is upon us. It should be done by this November. In addition to the traffic safety improvements, we will also now be able to apply for a quiet zone as part of this project. The city was also able to bury combat overhead lines in certain areas within the project limits, as well as install all-new water main within the project boundaries. And of course, I know the big one with residents is you can now turn westbound onto Irving when you're heading northbound on Wooddale Road, when the trades are, or when the gates are down. I know that's the number-one question all the time, so you will be able to do that.
Thank you. Next, consent agenda. We have five items, if no objections...
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Sizbarsky.
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
And that passes. Next, entertain a motion to approve the items on the agenda. Item number one, an ordinance amending Chapter 4, Article 17, Section 4.1801-4.1813 of the Municipal Code of City of Wooddale regarding solicitors and canvassers. Item number two, resolution seeking to approve a contract between the City of Wooddale and HR Green for the Ward 2 Phase 4 Design and Construction Engineering, in the not-to-exceed amount of $117,200. Item number three, a resolution seeking to approve a contract between the City of Wooddale and Wesco for the Drive Separation Program at Reichert and Potter, in the not-to-exceed amount of $80,560. Item number four, resolution seeking to approve a contract between the City of Wooddale and Robinson Engineering for the fiscal year 2018 road project design, in an amount not to exceed $29,500. Item number five, a resolution seeking to approve a contract between the City of Wooddale and Brothers Asphalt for the fiscal year 2017 patching program, in an amount not to exceed $106,250. Do I have a motion?
Make that motion.
Second, do I have a second?
Second.
Questions? Roll call.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Sizbarsky.
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
And that passes. Next, community chairman reports, planning and zoning. Alderman Catalano.
Yes, I have two, Mayor. The rezoning of the property located at 365 East Irving Park Road, that is my motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion is second.
How many seconds do we have?
Mike was first. All right, we have a few comments on this subject. We'll start with Christina Helsper, if you could please go to the podium, name and address.
Hi, my name is Christina Helsper, I live on 253 Ash in Wooddale. And I lived there for 35 years. First, I apologize for my English, that's my second language, so my pronunciation is probably not good. But I'm gonna try to do my best. Like I said, I lived in Ash Avenue for 35 years. And I make my home here, because I love the town. The last couple of years are different, because of the expansion of the O'Hare Airport. And the living, it's very difficult, become very difficult with the noise. And the plane nose day and night, every minute is every annoying. Now, the city wants to add another noisy business to our area, which is the body shop. And it doesn't belong there, because it's a residential area. We already dealing with a lot of noise from the train, planes, Irving Park is a couple houses away from us. So that's really bad for the residents. We don't need any more noise and destruction in our town. Especially, like I said, in residential area. Irving Park is the main route going through Wooddale. The businesses alongside of the Irving Park should be improved, not made worse. The intersection is a big improvement now for the city. And we hope the city will do another things to improve the looks of the building alongside of the Irving Park. So the citizen and the taxpayer can be proud of the town. Lot of homes are now for sale, because of the airplane nose. We don't wanna move from here, we would like to stay as long as possible. But the situation's getting worse, with all the stuffs going around. The city has to improve many route through the town, and not to put another establishment in the residential area. There are different businesses that can be put in this location, that does not require a lot of parking space. One of owner's problem cannot be put on the citizen, and the whole town be affected by it. And putting the wrong business in this area. The Irving Park should be like the window to the town. When people driving by, and they see improvement buildings, and nice curb appeal, which is not many of that, they may want to invest in the town. No one wants to see garbage for months in the alley, and weeds in front of the buildings. And every time we complain, we call city. There is a couches sitting in the alley for three to six months. Lucky, we got a neighbor with the forklift. He goes, picks up, he puts in his driveway, and our garbage truck pick her up. Because the stuff is sitting there for months. And we calling, nobody responds to it. Who wants to live in the town like this? When the broken TVs, couches, anything else is laying there. Thank you.
Thank you. Next will be Joe Helsper, and just so, for the sake of public comment, should be held to three minutes per person, okay? Go ahead. Yes. Joe.
Hello, everybody. My name is Joe Helsper, and I live at 259 Ash in Wooddale. I walk the alley, and I pass behind 365 by the alley, to go to the bank. Last week, I was going through the alley, when all of a sudden, a gush of water came at me. I had to move to get out of the way of the water. So I looked to see where the water was coming from. Here, there was a sump pump behind the building at 365. It was pouring out the water right down the center of the alley. Is that legal? There is a terrible mess behind this building also. Garbage, wood, TVs, junk, weeds, sandbags to keep the water from running down into the man's back door. And other junk laying around, screws, nuts, bolts, and everything else. Old pieces of plywood, and an old sign that says, hanging by the back of the building, used appliances. It looks terrible. For Wooddale residents going through the alley. And then, coming back from the bank, walking down the sidewalk, in front of 365, 365 Building, a car started to back up, and didn't see me. I was almost run over. This happened to me on two occasions. I was very lucky, I wasn't hurt. This is a very dangerous place for people walking on the sidewalk, by that building, and anybody riding a bike. I've seen a lot of people riding bikes along the sidewalk. So I think it's very dangerous. And what I see there, the building, is not a good-looking building, it looks terrible. And there was a lot of other things that was going on there. But it's not the place, and like I say, the alley is a mess. And anybody that goes through there, it's a disgrace. Okay, that's all I got to say about that building, but it's a sore eye for Wooddale.
Thank you. Next, Bozina Petrovich.
Good evening. My name is Bozina Thea Petrovich. I live at 181 Hawthorne Avenue. Dear Alderman, it's easier for me just to read a letter. We are writing to let you know how strongly we oppose the responsible proposed consideration for rezoning of the property located at 365 East Irving Park Road. Not only did we find out that the whole block on the north side of Irving Park, the city rezoned it to C2, where before it was a B2 retail and limited service business district. And now for the city to consider singling out this property for rezoning is misleading and appalling. As a real estate managing broker, I know that the first question when buying commercial property is, what is the zoning? Based on the zoning determines the value. If the owner of 365 Irving Park has a buyer, it would be to his tremendous advantage to have the property rezoned to C3, and then sell it. We should consider what is good for all the residents in Wooddale. Not for an investor that bought a property in a B2, and wants to convert it to C3. Any decision such as this, to put a C3 zoning between residential properties, that does not make sense. This kind of decision will set a precedent for further businesses, which would be a catastrophe. Instead, we would like to see the redevelopment move forward of Irving Park, the main corridor that the City of Wooddale has in place. Working with businesses to beautify the fronts, and buying out non-conforming properties as other surrounding towns have done in the last 20 to 25 years. Also, we would like the City of Wooddale to start buying the small, especially back-of-the-lot single-family dilapidated properties. Demolishing those homes, and give proven builders incentives to build new homes in our, in our town. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Mirko Petrovich.
My name is Mirko Petrovich. I'd like to ask the city council to give me equal time for my presentation as a petitioner.
His address.
If it's possible, my presentation may take more than three minutes.
Address. We have his address, it's on, could you state your address for the people watching?
Address, 181 Hawthorne Avenue.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Oh, then I can get the equal...
Yes, you can start, go ahead, start.
Okay, thank you. This is very hard for me, because I've entered this before. All of you know what took place in 2008, with motorcycle shop. Many thing happening, we had in that business landscaping, Rosario. Some other people, we had some Google contractor, we had a home liquidation reseller. We had ASVG Enterprises. I'm asking the city, did all these people had occupancy permit, that they all have a business licenses? In my investigation, it appeared that only one had it, business license to be in a property. And I noticed object a couple of weeks ago, there was a digging in behind the property of 365, 365 East Irving Park Road. They've been doing some installation, or some sump pump, and stuff like that. I went to the city hall, the permit wasn't full for that particular job. I'd like city to address the issue on the drainage, this property having stormwater issue. I would like city, see the owner of the property to resolve that issue. This property is discharging water to alley in front of my garage, and it's making dangerous condition. As you all know, there is a city code of Wooddale, the stipulate proper discharge of water from the neighboring property. Article 7, Storm Water Management, 17801 to 17830. Apparently, some of the notification, some property owner did not receive notification in a 250-feet radius, that is stipulated in the Section 9, 103. I would like to city to look into proper notification of the owners, so they can, they can make their own determination if they wanna come to the meeting or not. Last time, I did mention at the last meeting about life safety. Life safety is a big thing. I just want to remind you about the fire across the street, few years back. And possible consequences it may have. Today, anytime, life safety is of the most importance. Our motive repair shop don't mix with the mixed-use commercial residential. As you are aware, we have gasoline, oil fumes, noises where people should not leave. This is a kind of use is highly discouraged. This kind of use is highly discouraged by all the kind of regulation. I would like to city to consider, city council to consider the most important way to handle this life safety issue on that particular property. I have some picture to, I could not make enough copy for all of you, did I like to look at it?
You could pass them at the end, and they'll pass them down.
Rezoning of 365 Irving Park Road seems to contrary to sound land and use principle. In my investigation, I would like to call it a spot zoning. The spot zoning would become invalid, because it is not in accordance with a comprehensive or well-coordinated plan. As the way City of Wooddale Community Development Commission finding, presented to the city council. And City of Wooddale zoning map dated November 14, 2014. Fundamental fairness, one of the foundation truth of land use of law is that equal property should be treated equally. Often, in the case of allowed spot zoning, the suspicion is that perhaps the present person seeking the change is a friend of some decision maker, maker, or is owner, or is all political favor, or perhaps just is influential person around the town. If anyone, if anyone could have whatever zoning he or she wishes as a property owner, there will be no purpose in having the regulation. It would be like place where a work at, where supposedly in a earlier time, the zoning map was kept in a pencil and papers. Sneak it into the relevant offices, erase its category abbreviation, and change it into whatever they want. Those were the old days. I hope that city council will make decision that should be based on logical and sound analysis. Rather than personality, preferences, or property owners. I'm appealing to the city council to reject petitioner rezoning 365 East Irving Park Road from C2 to C3. I'm appealing to reject, thank you very much.
Thank you. We have next is Eugenia Angelopoulos.
Mayor, I would also ask that I could get more time.
If we can move it along.
Yeah, I will, I will speed read. In your package, I have all the information that I will be reading from, and I've also included copies of police reports and the city maintenance reports. My name is Jean Angelopoulos, and I work at 355 East Irving Park Road, and I'm also the owner of Wooddale Discount Liquor. I also would like to second what Mike said, and I would like to appeal that we do not rezone 365 Irving Park Road. And here's my case. As I stated before, one of the major flaws of this building is the lack of safe and sufficient parking. The front parking lot is a liability to the landlord, his current tenants, his future tenants, and possibly to the City of Wooddale. And it is a hazard to the future customers, pedestrians, customers of Wooddale Discount Liquor, resident motorists using Hemlock to turn left onto Irving Park Road, and residents and motorists using Irving Park Road. I have documented incidents of this problem. I would like to bring attention to the documented parking issues during the time period that the, that this property had a special use permit for a motorcycle repair shop to illustrate the frequency of parking violations due to the inadequate parking and inappropriate use of the building. On January 30th, 2008, green van parked on sidewalk. Vehicle was removed upon officer's arrival. February 15th, 2008, vehicle parked blocking sidewalk. Vehicle was removed by the owner. March 19th, 2008, black pickup truck parked on sidewalk. Vehicle was removed. 1119, 2008, vehicle... 11-19, 2008, vehicle parked parallel to Irving Park Road. Motorists cannot see around it, turning onto Irving Park Road. Owner removed vehicle. A few undocumented incidents. Used appliance store parking... The used appliance store parked a moving truck parallel to Irving Park Road to unload appliances. FedEx trucks parking parallel to Irving Park Road to pick up items from Rosario's jewelry store for their eBay/FedEx service. Lack of space also is a problem when you're trying to properly remove and relocate snow during the winter months in both the front and the back parking. Public parking on Hemlock was addressed last week. I would like to address it as well. Alderman Sussmarski brought it up. He said that this potential new tenant can use the side parking on Hemlock. The city parking on Hemlock is currently being used by tenants and tenants' visitors of both 355 and 345 Irving Park Road, the employees and patients of the spinal health clinic, employees of Wooddale Discount Liquor, and residents and their visitors that live on Hemlock, at times also by random people who have abandoned vehicles there as well. I have two documented incidents. On 12/20/2008, complaint that vehicles, not one vehicles, belonged to one person were asked to be removed. The owner was not found to be a resident of either buildings. On March 18, 2016, a car with the state of Wisconsin plates was parked for three weeks. Police red-tagged the vehicle. The owner was not a resident of either buildings. Yes, there are parking spots there, but they are not easily available and the area is already congested. It is misleading for the landlord to suggest the availability for the use of public parking to a potential future tenant for the use as part of their business. The CDC report also cited, which you have, that this building does not meet city parking requirements. I would like to remind the council of the report that Mr. Mo Khan, who presented to the CDC meeting, found that the building would not meet the parking requirements for the future proposed business of a motor vehicle repair facility. The minimum requirement was six and this building had five. I'm not sure if this included a handicap space and if this finding included the loss of space for a garbage corral that according to city code needs to be built in the rear of the building. If not, then this building actually has three parking spots. Interior parking. Finally, I would like to ask the council to ask Mr. Tulo and/or Alderman Sussmarski to submit a diagram of how the tenant plans to fit 30 cars inside this building. I would now like to bring attention to the non-conforming attributes of this building. It is not aligned with the neighboring buildings and built way beyond the building line. It has no grassy green area. Parking space lengths are not uniform. There's no proper water drainage. I'd like to bring attention to property maintenance report dated on 5/27/14. A report was made that the owner installed a trench drain without a permit and inspection. Currently, there is a black flexible pipe that empties water out of the building into the alley. As noted before, the property does not have safe or sufficient parking. As noted before, proper and safe snow removal and relocation of snow is a challenge. The building has flooded. Both the zoning board and the community and the CDC have found this property not suitable for the proposed rezoning. The property does not have a garbage corral. The absence of a garbage corral has caused numerous problems for both the residents and the neighboring buildings. Documented service calls and property maintenance cases for garbage issues reported on 7/12/2011, so it goes back five years, 8/20/2012, 9/19/2012, 9/24/2013, 5/20/2016, 5/26/2016, and 9/9/2016. We've had and we continue to have garbage issues. You have heard from some of the residents of how they've absorbed the problems stemming from Mr. Tulo's lack of garbage maintenance control on his property throughout the last five years or more. It is irresponsible for this landlord to offer leases to potential tenants for the use of a non-conforming building that has attributes that hinder potential success for a business. I would also like to talk about the Marathon Gas Station that was brought up last week. I don't want to compare it. I want to contrast it. That building is very different from 365 Irving Park Road. There are many obvious differences. The Marathon Gas Station building does not have an apartment above it. 365 does. The Marathon Gas Station building does not have buildings with apartments above them flanking it. 365 does. The Marathon Gas Station building has more than four-and-a-half feet of distance from its neighboring building. The 365 property is only four-and-a-half feet away from my building. I have four families that live upstairs. It's too close. The Marathon Gas Station has multiple bay doors facing Irving Park Road. The 365 building has one bay door facing both the alley and the residents next to the alley. The Marathon Gas Station property has over 25 parking spots on its property. The 365 property may have five to four. The Marathon Gas Station building and property is self-sufficient. The 365 property would like to use public parking spots as part of its business plan and has previously used neighboring property parking lots. According to the property maintenance case report on May 5, 2015, Mr. Ruggeri, who's on the left side, complained that customers from the appliance store were parking in his lot. The Marathon Gas Station business does not use the alley as a thoroughfare to conduct its business. The 365 property would have to turn the alley into a thoroughfare to conduct business. Finally, the Marathon Gas Station property is two to two-and-a-half times larger than the 365 property. I would like to point out that the only similarity that they both have is that they both cannot fit 30 cars inside their buildings. Next, I would like to discuss documented history of illegal businesses at 365. I would like to bring attention to two, possibly three businesses that operated out of 365 Irving Park Road without documented business licenses and were not inspected prior to business operation. The following property maintenance case show that, and here's the case number 3574, dated October 8, 2013, landscape business using rear of building without a business license. Case number 3987 dated November 19, 2014, Wooddale Police Department found a man doing auto repair work late at night, no business license, and improper use according to zoning code. We are not sure if the used appliance store that was there last summer had a business license. We would like to have an investigation on that one. Next, I would like to talk about the devaluation of neighboring properties. I would like for Mr. Tulo and the other petitioners for this proposal to bear the responsibility of running a professional analysis to demonstrate to the neighboring property owners how this rezoning proposal will not devalue the surrounding properties. And finally, I'd like to offer some alternatives to this rezoning. We would like to ask the car repair tenant to consider using the empty ready electric building. It's more suitable for your business and it's guaranteed that you will succeed in that property. We'd also like to see Mr. Tulo contract into facade program to help him improve his property and attract appropriate C2 tenants and comply with the City of Wooddale Comprehensive Plan. Or he can make structural changes to improve the parking deficiency. Finally, the City of Wooddale should purchase the property at fair market value. I am opposed at this rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you.
And sorry for the extra time.
Next, Brian Spindell. I said that correctly. Name and address, please.
How you doing? I'm Brian Spindell. I live at 531 Catalpa. I've had the joy of trying to open a business in this town. There's many, many, many empty buildings around Wooddale's. Everyone in this room knows. I understand everything all these people are coming up with, you know, pumps and all around. This isn't, we're not trying to open a mining key where you're going to have hundreds of cars coming through the door. It's more of a specialty BMW Volvo service thing we're trying to target. It's extremely hard to open business in this town, okay? Especially automotive. We had a perfect building. It was 5,900 square feet on Creel Drive. If any of you guys drove through this industrial park, these buildings come and go. Some businesses succeed, some of them do not, okay? As far as what they're saying with the location and everything, the building is in a business district. Everybody keeps saying residential. Where's there... There was one house on Irving Park Road within a mile of that place and it just got bulldozed. There's not one house on Irving Park Road. And as far as the people that live behind all these businesses in the alley, you got liquor trucks coming into her liquor store. I mean, there's delivery trucks coming all the time. This isn't that kind of business where you're going to have hundreds of trucks. I don't know where all this is. A lot of it is misinformed information. I live in this town. If I lived on the alley, I would not want a motorcycle shop there either. I couldn't agree with you more, okay? This would be an eight-to-five business, okay? Nobody's going to be revving engines, you know, dangerous fumes. No building is, you know, there's not a whole lot of ideal buildings there. Ready electric. I don't know if it's tall enough. But what I'm getting at is, we're not trying to... I would comply with everything if this were to be approved with all of these tenants. And as far as the garbage in the back, I couldn't agree with you more. That's horrible. But if you had a tenant like somebody responsible in the building taking care of the facade, taking care of the garbage, monitoring these things, part of the problem is Joe's owned this building for a while now and it's been vacant most of the time, which is the problem with the majority of the buildings that are vacant. Anytime you got a vacant building, you're going to have people, you know, she said there was a truck parked there from Wisconsin for three weeks. Well, guess what? There's nobody really there. Joe's trying to rent the place out. And I mean, if no one's there, lots of weird things are going to happen. I wouldn't want a couch behind it either. So I can assure you, there would be no debris around the building if we were in the building. And as far as the parking goes, none of the... I go to her liquor store all the time. That liquor store is brutal to pull in and get out. She has a small parking lot that you can turn around in. But it's dangerous. People back out. This is part of the evolution of Irving Park Road. It may come to surprise to a lot of people, but at one point Irving Park was a two-lane road, okay? Due to eminent domain, they've eaten up a lot of the city of Wooddale. Wooddale's been losing out for years, okay? And with the noise, there's not going to be no incredible noise coming out of that building. If there was, Garcia Ottawa across the street and many of the other things would be overwhelming the city of Wooddale already. Not to mention the train horns that I live off of Foster and Catalpa, which is five blocks away. I hear them every night. You know, I mean, they're laying on these horns. So there's no... Why would you buy a house on the back of an alley right next to Wooddale Road? And I don't know what this has to do with people that live in Hawthorne because Hawthorne's about six or seven blocks away. But I don't understand why you would buy a house on Irving Park Road. As far as her tenants that live upstairs, there's not going to be dangerous fumes. There's shops everywhere down Irving Park Road. This, I don't, this is like way blown out of proportion. So I am for this, okay? I understand everyone's concerns. If somebody responsible is in the building, I think you've had a large amount of irresponsible people in a lot of these businesses. I mean, Irving Park Road, if we keep going, it's going to be all liquor stores and, you know, cigarette shops. An automotive shop, I don't know how that is like such a downplay to the place. I mean, I see a lot of automotive shops. They're nice. I mean, we'll do the best we can with flowers and taking care of the place, provided we get in there. I mean, but a lot of these oppositions are baseless or they're based on the fact that the building is empty. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tulo, you'd like to say something? Yes, please, go ahead.
I would like to pass this out. Can I have at least two hours? Again, my name is Joe Tulo. I've been up here quite a bit, unfortunately. I don't know where to start. As a former high school history teacher for 35 years and worked in a high school, a famous congressman made the comments, "Never confuse people with the facts because I've already made up my mind." And I would like to bring out some facts to all of you and give a rebuttal to some of the false accusations that I've had here. Again, I don't even know where to start, but I will start with, and then I'll address some of the neighbors' concerns. But the packet that I passed out there, I gave you a platter survey here, okay? With a proposal which is done by someone who is knowledgeable in planning this out as far as the particular parking for this facility, okay? And we come up with possibly nine spaces, maybe even more. There are two spaces for the apartment inside the garage that's capable of parking more. When we made comments about the maximum capacity on the inside of the building, there is plenty of space. There's almost 3,000 square feet in there. He is going to have a small, high-end repair shop for here. Concerns about if it's changed to C3, okay? I think I've addressed the parking. Also, I want to go back to that. I gave a picture of backing out into the space, the lip and the space that goes between Irving. If the cars back out, and I showed it in the picture there, you can back out safely and pull out onto Irving Park Road. Show the back of the building, how much space is there. It's a very big building. It was built in 63. It was legal. It is not a non-conforming business. I wouldn't have purchased it from that. The building has been there for almost 50 or 60 years before there was a house where the liquor store is and a house, from what I've been told, next to it. So this building has been there for a long time, probably before the houses were built behind there. And if you buy a house behind an alley and commercial property, you know, what do you expect? You obviously probably got the property at decreased value. So if you also, I gave you some documentation from the Addison Township property records. If you'll note on there, it says building utility, industrial and manufacturing, okay? Now, I know that not the same for the, I mean, the city ordinance and the zoning is different, but that proves that this building at one point had to have a C3 zoning. This has zoned me out of business. This building was built for this type of use. Do I want manufacturing in there with loud noises? I have an apartment there also. Do you think I want to do that? They keep referring to the motorcycle. He lasted two months, signed a five-year lease, and he still owes me $8,000, which I will never see. And he was there two months before he paid his rent and was out of there. It took almost six months for him to get in there. Every time I've come in front of this council, every business that I have had has been rejected unless it was in the C2. And the C2, everyone had a business license. There is no one to my knowledge that didn't, okay? So these accusations, you know, I'm considering other means on some of these accusations because I don't like to be accused of things. Second of all, on the dumping, the water, okay, I had permits for that. The building's been flooded. They built a new alley three years ago and it's almost a foot and a half higher than, or I'm not... Then in the peak corner by the liquor store behind there and all the water is running towards my building. I have met with Ed Cage. I've met with the building directors. I had permits for everything that's been done there and it's been approved by the city, okay? And I've spent an enormous amount of money having drainage things. If their properties were flooding or anyone else in here, they would be here all day long, including my neighbors. I didn't create the problem. I didn't build the alley a foot higher and running it directly towards that and flooding my building. And the amount of money that I have spent correcting the problem, I finally have it corrected with no help from the city except for approvals on the changes that I've made. It's quite disheartening to be accused of something that I didn't do. When a building's empty, gang graffiti, do you think I would dump a couch there? Do you think I would dump a TV there? I have spent enormous amount of money cleaning that place. I have spent enormous amount of money cleaning that place up constantly, constantly, all right? And I tried to get that out. It was dumped, it wasn't dumped on my property, it was dumped on, in next door or whatever, and people push things. I've complained to the police and I've made numerous complete police reports about it.
People push things.
Okay? So I, I'm just addressing some of these.
Excuse me. Quiet. Please, no comment.
Everything, to my knowledge, you know, we're trying to solve problems. You mentioned about one of the tenants that I had hand there, he only lasted two months, okay? And left the building and didn't pay his rent, okay? I had one tenant in there for eight years, okay? He was a legal business. Everything else in there was from there. Some of the people that have come in there legally with business licenses, if they do illegal things, I didn't know about it, okay? I did not know about it. A lot of people can come into your building and do illegal things. All I'm asking is, let's take us, let's move forward instead of the past. Let's look forward and try to create Wooddale into the village we want. I've stated up here that I would like to improve the building, but I'd like to get it rented with a quality tenant who has experience and can be successful in this location. I didn't create the building. The building is there and it's been there for 50 years, okay? If the village wants to buy it or they wanna redevelop it, that's another issue. But in the meantime, all I'm trying to do is survive as a businessman, try to find a quality tenant because as Dennis mentioned, when you have an empty building, it lends itself to crime. There's liquor bottles, people doing, you know, all kinds of illegal things behind the building, on the side of the building, all over in this, in the alleys. So, I am trying to correct the problem and I'm asking for this rezoning. I do not want a motorcycle place in there, anything that would cause noise or any other kind of disturbance. I have an apartment there also. Why would I wanna do that to myself? All I'm asking for is the flexibility to try to find a quality tenant that could match the building. I have no control over who wants to rent the building. None, as the owner. I have marketed, as I've mentioned, in each one of the zonings, it's been on the multiple listings, it's been in LoopNet, CoStar, I passed out, we've had flyers passed out, we've done everything possible and go on to other communities. I have mentioned Arlington Heights are giving free loans for bringing new businesses in. I just heard the radio at Bedford Park, there's all kinds of advertising, "Come to Bedford Park, start your business." I'm asking for help from the City of Wooddale to help us and redevelop this area, make it things, we can make improvements to the building. I think that the streetscapes would be an excellent choice. But obviously, I'm not a multimillionaire that can afford to do something unless I have the building rented and I can move forward. And I'm asking for help from the staff. I've constantly, I'm looking for a tenant. And this is the only concrete tenant that I have possibly that can go out from here. I think he's a quality man and he said what he would do there, would have normal business hours and not be a disturbance to any of the neighbors or to the people that would live in my apartment, in my building also. So, again, I think I've rebutted some of the things here and with the parking situation of the layout that you could possibly have, the zoning and the noise complaints, I'm tired of hearing about a motorcycle place that was in there for three months and stiffed me out of a lot of money, who was a horrible tenant and didn't do what he was supposed to do. And the things she mentioned are probably true, but I had no control over that and he was a lousy tenant. And I would never want a motorcycle place in that place ever again. And there's one across the street already. If you don't know that already, there's a motorcycle place there. I am not gonna try to rent to anyone who is out there that's not, wouldn't be a quality tenant, okay? And, and finding them are very difficult to do. Thank you for your consideration.
Right, so we had a motion in a second. Now open up for discussion. Alderman Woods, go ahead.
I think the Crowley sits here and talks all night long. Each side's got some arguments. You could argue the building was there first or doesn't, doesn't matter. The one thing that rings true, and I think everybody up here can agree on that, is there's issues. That building wasn't built for today. Things changed. Things were taken away from that building. Alleys were built, all that stuff. Again, I know that I legally can't make a motion, but I think the suggestion, as was my suggestion before, we need to stand up and, and purchase the building and move forward with improving Irving Park Road, because I think that's the only way it's gonna get improved.
Alderman Messina.
Yes, I just wanted to commend the, the residents and also the business owner for all the hard work. This is, it's a lot of time and a lot of effort on both your ends, so it shows the passion you guys both have. I, I did have one question for, for Mr. Tulo. Could I, could I ask that question?
Mr. Spindel.
If you've got a question, you should direct it to staff and if staff can't answer it, then we could invite someone else who could. But I would direct the inquiries to staff.
So, maybe that would be.
Go ahead. Mr. Cage and perhaps Ms. Chrissy.
Okay. Mr. Cage can answer, or ask you a question? Okay. So I know this is probably before your time, but Mr. Tulo mentioned that the tenant he had for the motorcycle shop was there for two months, three months? Is that correct?
Yes.
Um, yes, that's, that's what I've heard, two to three months. Very short period of time.
Okay. So he was the crappy tenant, I guess, right? But, okay. But you signed how long of a lease with him?
Signed for four years, I believe.
Four or five, I think you said? Okay.
Right, hey, hold on.
Thank you. I didn't know if you knew the amount of time the lease was signed for.
Mr. Tulo mentioned it.
I mentioned it.
He said he lost $80,000.
Okay.
If I remember correctly.
That's all.
Good. Follow-up? No. Alderman Jacob.
Yeah, again, I, you know, thank you to everybody that has come out. You know, my whole thing, if this was, if you were here asking for a special use, I, I mean, it would be a totally different ballgame. Once we rezoned this, a C3, and this gentleman, he could, you know, as far as I know, you're a great businessman, but there's no guarantee you're gonna be here forever. You may sell your business, you may decide to go elsewhere. There's no guarantee that Mr. Tulo's gonna keep the building forever. Once he sells it, we could get another motorcycle shop and then we could get anything. Once we rezone it to C3, you can't go back. Again, if this was a special use, I would have no issue with this. But, to change this and change what the City of Wooddale is trying to do to Irving Park forever, it, it just doesn't make sense. Like I said, I mean, I'm sure you're a great businessman and I'd hope you'd be there a long time, but.
Hold on. Can't comment.
I, I mean, there, there is no guarantees, unless I have Mr. Tulo sign a contract that's guarantees he'll have you as a tenant in there for.
No, hold on.
Okay.
So, basically, you'd be for it if it was special use. Got it.
Okay.
We have another, Alderman Woods, you have another comment? Go ahead.
My comment is then, because I don't wanna drag the property owner through this and, and bring all the, the neighbors and neighboring, or businesses from next door, everybody's saying they'll give them a special use, but all the arguments still hold true, right? So if they let them in under special use, you can or you can't park with or without a special use. You can, and I'm not taking one side of who's telling the correct story or if it can work or it can't work, I'm just listening at what, to what everybody told me. And, and if we're saying now that under special use that, that it'll work, I envision three months from today or 60 days, however fast we could get the special use thing, you guys will be sitting here and, and you guys will be sitting here, right? Everybody's nodding into the affirmative. We're gonna be having the same issue. So what I'm asking everybody on the council is, so magically, we're gonna change our mind because it's a special use and I go back and renew, the only thing to really do here is purchase the lease. Thank you.
Thank, we have a motion in a second. Alderman Sizmarski, you want to comment? Go ahead.
Who issued the business to the bike shop everybody keeps referring to?
There was a special use, if I recall.
Who issued it?
Pardon me?
Who issued the business license? The permit to go in there?
What?
For him to do it.
Staff did. It went through a special use.
Okay.
It was approved at council level, special use.
And secondly, you did vote down special use permit before, so.
Right, there was, well, a couple of the members here might not have been, maybe.
No, some members were not here, but.
Right.
Quite a few are.
Right. All right, we have a motion in a second and that was to approve, so I need a roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
No.
Alderman Jacob?
No.
Alderman Messina?
No.
Alderman Sorrentino?
No.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
No.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
No.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Next is approval of the purchase of the 2017 Ford Fusion SE Hybrid in the amount not to exceed $28,643. That is my motion. Give a second.
Second.
Any questions on this roll call?
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
No.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes. Next, public health and safety. Alderman Eugene Wesley. Thank you. Public Works.
I have two, two reports, Mayor. One, a resolution seeking to approve an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Wooddale and the Village of Itasca for the reconstruction and maintenance of certain sections of Mill Road.
Is that your motion?
Is your motion?
Yeah, that'll be my motion.
Give a second. We have a motion in a second. Questions on this? Alderman Eugene Wesley.
I have, uh, two questions, Mayor. I, I noticed that Itasca did sign off on it, right? Am I right?
Mr. Murmice.
Yeah, they, they approved that at their last council meeting, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, so is that project almost done? Or where we at with that project?
Yes, the surface portion of that project, which they are, that's what the payment is for, is completed. We have not received billing or anything like that, but the surface portion of that project is completed.
Anything follow-up?
No, that's it, Mayor.
Any other questions on this? Roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
That passes.
Next, a resolution seeking to approve a contract between the City of Wooddale and Unique Concrete slash Frank's Ideal Welding for stairs and fencing at 200 East Irving Park Road in a not-to-exceed amount of $18,140. That is my motion.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions on this? Alderman Jacob.
I, I'm actually, yes for this, but I just have a question to staff as why this was never brought to committee, why this is directly brought here.
Go ahead, Mr. York.
Yes, it's very time-sensitive to get this, part of this project done. We just received the final quote back after the deadline for the last committee meeting, so we brought it directly to council because we just need to get this done. If you notice right now in front of Christie's, you'll have two walls and you got an open spot in between. It's not very safe right now, so we just wanted to expedite this, especially with the meeting schedule upcoming.
Any other questions? Alderman Wesley.
All right, so we passed it tonight. How quick are they gonna move in and put that in? Is it gonna be in before the snow flies or before they actually, the contractors open up the whole road?
Mr. York.
Yes, the goal is to get it done before the snow flies. Obviously, the concrete portion, it's a pretty simple project to do so the stairs can get put in. We'd have to make sure when the railings and the fence can get in, but they didn't seem like it was gonna be that big of a project for them to do. Probably the biggest problem would be lead time on the, on the fence, which I do not know at this time.
Thank you. Any other questions? Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes.
That's the end of my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Finance and Administration, Alderman Jacob?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Approval of list of bills, Alderman Jacob. Oh, under other business, I'm sorry, I'm, I didn't click on the other, airport noise, sorry. Alderman Jacob.
Just an update on the complaints. We have for May, June and July, in May, we had 42,870 complaints, of which there were 6,487 complainants, and that's in City of Wooddale. June was 38,779 from 5,110 complainants. July was 46,130 with 6,798 residents. So I just asked residents to keep complaining, to get anything done. I mean, we have to keep complaining and also ask that you fill out the, the applica, I should say, the poll.
Survey.
To the survey for the night, for the flag quiet at night. And that's under my report.
And you might mention that we have the, on our website, the link.
Yeah, there's a link on the City of Wooddale website for that.
Okay, thank you. Stormwater Commission, Alderman Jacob.
No report.
And approval of list of bills, Alderman Jacob.
Make a motion to approve the list of bills for September 15th, 2016, for $670,924.83.